I will call a regular session of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Please join me for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought the Chinese were interfering. I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. We have an agenda. Public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium and give us your name and your address.
My name is Cornell Housman. It might take me a little bit due to my disability. I stuck a little bit. My home was taken. Y'all made a mistake and took my home back in 2019. According to, according to Iowa Code 427.8 and 9 and 10 of Iowa Code, as soon as y'all become aware of my disability, y'all got the power to call down to the county treasurers and let them know y'all made a mistake. And I can have my home back. And no reason for my home to still be taken. Supreme Court ruled in my favor. People living in my home, I'm still homeless. And y'all ain't did nothing to make my situation any better. What y'all planning on doing?
This is a situation where if you made all of us aware of it, Mr. Housman, and you're putting the fault of this issue on the county, the county is not at fault in this matter.
But y'all aware.
There's some actions that you needed to take and your family needed to take, and they weren't taken. So we ended up at this point. And we've all explained that to you. So I don't know what else you expect from my-
Sir, is there, is no, is no statute of limitation on disabled people? Personally incompetent, there's no statute of limitations on us.
Number one, we shouldn't be answering this because we're just in local comments. We can listen, listen to you. We can't, you can come in and talk to us anytime, Mr. Housman, but we can't talk to you right now because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, regardless of what the law say, as soon as y'all become aware of my situation, y'all got the power to call down and the treasurer and get my house back. Supreme Court said, I'll get my house back. Why y'all, what's the holdup? My day in court, I need my day in court to get my house back. What's the holdup?
Mr. Chinon?
At this point, I'd advise the board not have further discussion on the matter. Um, I, I will say, uh, just as a partial answer to Mr. Housman's question, uh, there's been a, he's under a misunderstanding of what's taking place in the courts at this point. I am familiar with the matter.
Thank you.
Supreme Court didn't say, um, I can remain in my home throughout the whole process?
And, and again, I can't. We can't have discussion about this at this point. Uh, but I, I can say I'm familiar with the matter. And I know what you're stating right now is a misunderstanding, and I advise you to talk to your lawyer about it.
All right. Do we have any others that would like to provide public comment? Any others in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
All right. This week's expenditures totaled $202,435.48, of which the secondary roads department has $53,275, Sheriff's Department $33,328, and finally, the Attorney's Office $28,671. Everything looks normal.
We have a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such as claim. I make a motion to do so. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes. Item number four, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Just wanted to give you a brief construction update, how the work's progressing on our bridge and roadway projects. I just brought one slide this morning, and this shows a picture of East Gresham Road Bridge. PCI is the contractor on this project. And they are, they, their last work activity has been pouring the concrete rail. You can see the, the green steel here in the photo. Uh, that has now been poured. And they are continuing to backfill the abutments. And they've used approximately 80% of the working days on this project. So work is going well on this project. I would suspect they would be complete by the end of October. Our, uh, other two bridge projects would be the Kimball Avenue Bridge Project, which is a contract bridge that, I don't have a photo of that, but Jim Schroeder Construction is doing that. That is going along well. If you'd like to see that bridge, let me know. We can get you out there to see that. Our bridge crew is continuing to work on a small bridge project on Quarry Road. That work is progressing well. And then lastly, of course, the Grundy Road regrade project that is moving along. PCI has approximately a little over a mile and a half yet to grade before they are finished with the grading. We are hopeful that they will finish that this construction season yet, by the end of November is when they're forecasting. Hopefully, the weather holds out and they're able to get that done. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, uh, recently, there was an article either in the local paper, the Des Moines Register, or KWW, I can't remember, about the amount of deficient bridges in our state. But it seems like in Black Hawk County, we've done a fairly good job of maintaining, replacing. Our bridges are not in bad shape, as in some of the areas of the state.
Right. We have approximately, I want to say 18 to 20 bridges that are rated poor. We now use the word term instead of structurally deficient. Uh, they are rated poor where we have a posting on them. We have, we do have a few that are in that category. We are continuing to work on those every year. That's why we need to be continuing to replace two to four structures every year so that we're continually, um, taking poorer ones out of the inventory and replacing those with new, new bridges. I can get you more statistics if you're interested in that or share those with you next week or-
I don't think it's necessary. I just wanted to reassure the public that, I mean, in Black Hawk County, we're aware of. We're generally in a good position with ones that aren't as in good a condition. We're aware of it, and they're, they're safe. And we've set standards to keep, ensure that they continue to be safe. And there's a replacement cycle that we're on.
Correct. And the federal, federal regulations require us to inspect bridges, all bridges on a 24-month cycle. So we are aware of, are very aware of what are, the condition of our bridges is.
How many bridges do we have again? About?
Approximately 230 in Black Hawk County.
I think that's a lot more than people realize. Sheriff?
Good morning. Um, I provided you all with a pin and a coin from the Vision of Equity Task Force or Vision for Equity Task Force that both Chief Danny Banks from Hudson and myself serve on. Uh, that task force was formed in June of last year in partnership with the Iowa State Sheriff's and Deputies Association, of which I'm the president this year, uh, the Iowa Chiefs of Police Association, and the Iowa Nebraska NAACP, in response to and in anticipation of continuing issues with race equity, but obviously, all types of equity issues as it revolves around law enforcement matters. And so there's a, a robust, uh, group of administrators that meet every month across the state of Iowa. And, uh, we've been working, uh, pretty diligently on legislative issues uh, within the last legislative session. And we've got matters that are being brought forward, uh, in the coming legislative session. We, uh, have been involved and engaged. I don't know if you remember, uh, just outside of Grinnell, there was a, a black gentleman that was found burned in the ditch. Uh, our task force was engaged and involved with, um-
Who's ever online that's speaking, could you mute your phone or your, thank you.
Our, uh, our, uh, task force was engaged with the chief down there to make sure that those kinds of issues don't blow up into something more dramatic. Um, and so, uh, those are the kinds of things that we focus on with this task force. And it's nice that we have two representatives from Black Hawk County. Here locally, uh, your sheriff's office is probably more diverse now than it's ever been. We have more, uh, racial and ethnicity, uh, representation than we've ever had. We still have a tough nut to crack with, uh, the black population. We continue to work and outreach, uh, with different groups, more groups than we've ever reached out and partnered with before. Uh, but we have more female, uh, leadership, uh, than we've ever had in the sheriff's office. Hispanic, Pacific Islander, uh, Eastern European. Uh, I'm very, very proud of, of where our staff stands today, uh, with regard to our, our, uh, equity uh, and diversity. So, um, those coins and pins are just, uh, a token to kind of keep, uh, to the forefront of, uh, the efforts that are being made and the partnerships that are being forged uh, within the law enforcement community here in the state of Iowa to try and be in, uh, kind of a proactive state all the time, uh, with regard to these issues. And so we share them with you to let you know and, and be aware of, uh, the fact that here in Black Hawk County, we're well represented statewide and, and that we are, uh, very, very progressive and proactive and, and engaged in those kinds of issues. Issue number two, I'm sure you're all aware, um, our former chaplain Larry McKenny passed away. Uh, his visitation is Friday afternoon, and his, uh, funeral is Saturday morning at the Open Bible Church over on Jefferson Street. So you're all encouraged to, uh, swing by to one of those and pay respects to him. Former Waterloo firefighter for many, many, many years and, and obviously, uh, a chaplain for the sheriff's office for several as well. A super great, pious man that will be deeply, deeply missed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? Any department heads or elected officials online or on Zoom that would like to provide an update? Approval from the, of the minutes from September 21st, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. We are going to have a hearing later in the meeting. It's in regard to ordinance number 77-256, the rezone request by Dustin Cox. Item number seven is the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number eight, proclamations. The first one is a resolution to proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month. Mr. Veder, do you have them?
Probably in here.
Barb.
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
You want to read it first or?
Yes.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and in Black Hawk County. And whereas Black Hawk County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources that citizens of the Black Hawk County need. And whereas Black Hawk County is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas over 14,000 individuals in Black Hawk County rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually. And whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 9.4 million meals to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region in fiscal year 2021. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, we, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in Black Hawk County. And I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Move to approve?
Second.
Ma'am?
Um, on behalf of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for their past support of the food bank. I understand that, um, you're not funding us currently, um, and I would like to entertain at some point a discussion on that. But just so you know, that food insecurity, um, last year hit an all-time high. Um, over the years, um, it's been up and down. Um, and because of the support that the community gave us and, um, the federal government specifically, um, we were able to meet that challenge, um, hitting an all-time high in distribution. The good news is that right now, meat is not what it was a year ago, and we are able now to spend our time building a strong organization for the future as we continue to provide food and grocery products to nonprofit organizations and individuals in Northeast Iowa. What we really, really, really have a need for is volunteering. So if anybody has time with their church group, with their family, whatever, um, we do need volunteers to come in on a daily basis. Um, we have openings nights and weekends. We really, really could use the help, um, to, um, to help us go through the food. Annually, we rescue, have probably 40% of the food that we take in is rescued from supermarkets, distribution centers, gardens, name it. And all of that food has to be gone through before we can distribute it. And so that's really where we need the help the most. We do need help with backpacks, um, and other programs. But anything anybody can do to help us volunteer, I encourage you to go to our website, www.nefb.org, um, to sign up to volunteer. We would really, um, appreciate that support. Um, I will say too, um, of the eight programs that we have, um, the Cedar Valley Food Pantry, um, starting next week, we'll be inside for client choice again. Fridays, um, we do a parish, uh, produce and perishable distribution that's all curbside. Um, so you just have to drive up, get your food, and away we go. But it's also our most nutritious food. 68% of what we're distributing is either, um, nutritious or perishable or frozen items, um, such as protein. Um, and we're able to provide clients with limited incomes, um, with that nutritious food so they can stay in their homes. So with that, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. But again, thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you for all the ways you and your staff and volunteers have gone above and beyond during a really difficult time to serve our community. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Any others? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
All right. The next resolution is to proclaim the month of October as Labor Appreciation Month. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Veder? You have such a good voice for reading these.
Thank you. Whereas hard-working people across the Black Hawk County prove that our community is filled with the most creative, dynamic, and talented workers in the world. And whereas the right to organize and collectively bargain is a fundamental American value. Since it began, organized labor has raised living standards and built our middle class. It is the reason we have child labor laws, 40-hour work weeks, weekends, overtime, vacations, the minimum, the minimum wage, sick leave, parental leave, OSHA, employment non-discrimination, pensions, social security, health insurance, and so much more. And whereas the opportunities many Americans value today exist because their parents and grandparents fought for these basic rights and values. Principles upheld by the honorable laborers of generations past and their labor unions continue to fuel the growth of our economy and a strong middle class. And whereas there is a vigorous fight to protect these rights and values, and during this Labor Union Appreciation Month, we reaffirm that collective bargaining is a cornerstone of the American dream. Public employees, including professional educators, social workers, postal workers, ambulance employees, clerks, conservation workers, public health workers, public attorneys, police officers, firefighters, snowplow drivers, correctional officers, and others, as well as workers in private industries, including electrical workers, plumbers, auto workers, carpenters, and others, are at the foundation of what makes the American dream a reality. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 to be Labor Union Appreciation Month in Black Hawk County.
Mr. Schwartz?
Nope, is, uh, um, brought this forward as approached by-